Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Can everybody hear me out back? There are folks usually in the auditorium tonight who weren't able to access that tonight. We're all gonna get pretty cozy in the next couple of months here. Rearrange rooms and schedules and things like that, we're gonna talk about that some tonight. We are being recorded, my hope is that once we're done with this meeting tonight, we can get this posted to our websites so that anybody that wasn't able to make it, because clearly there's not parents of 120 some odd students here tonight, they'll be able to see it as well. We thought about having this next week, but a lot of people are on vacation or away at different things, I'm headed out to a conference today, so I wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to talk with folks and bring folks up to speed about where we are at the middle school, and in particular, tonight, the eighth grade. I'd like to thank the school board members that are here with me tonight, and Ben at our chair, Coria Mason is here as well, School Board member John Blake is out there somewhere. Any other board members that anybody see coming? Thank you for joining me tonight. I don't know how long this is gonna take, I'm thinking less than an hour, maybe? We're actually gonna give a tour when we're done, so you can see where the eighth grade is gonna be housed here at the high school. In between, you can take any questions or try to address any concerns that you have. So how did we get here? Tuesday morning, we had the delayed opening. We got started with our school day, and one of our teachers realized that it looked like the ceiling in her classroom was starting to sag. And she notified the office, took a quick look at it, decided, yeah, there's something going on there, we got the kids out of that room. We also took the students out of the adjacent rooms and moved everybody down to the cafeteria. In the meantime, I was on my way over there. We were also dealing with heating issues, too. So I made the decision, when I got there, that let's just send everybody home from the middle school. We called for the buses and did an early dismissal. You've got, that'll work an out call, too. So we got everybody out of the building safely, there were no, the building, everything is still standing, nothing's caved in or collapsed or anything like that. So we did what I think was the right thing in getting everybody out of it. Fire department was called, they came over, looked at it, they don't want anybody in that part of the building at all. Okay? So it's been isolated off. The rest of the building, we've had structural engineers look at us to check, in fact, we did this with the entire district. Because of the concerns with that building, the business administrator and I decided, along with the school board, to have a structural engineer come in and look at all of the buildings. And when I say all of the buildings, all four of our school buildings that are currently in use, plus the Charter School, because that's in a building that the school district owns, and the Swayze Gym. And so we had them come in, and they found no structural issues whatsoever in any of those buildings, but they advised us to get the snow off. So when the structural engineer tells you, you need to take the snow off the roof, you gotta take the snow off the roof. And so that's why we ended up, we were trying to catch up to it, but there was so much snow on the roof. We had some drifts in some of the lower areas, the way the roof lines come together, some of the drifts were like 12 to 15 feet high of snow that had to be cleared by hand, because this building alone is over two acres, and so it took a lot of people, we had 50, 60 people up on the roof clearing, clearing snow. Snow blowers, shovels, anything we could get, we even had cranes on site. We've actually used the cranes on some of the other schools, too. So at this point in time, the high school is completely clear, ready to go. Baking will be done by tomorrow morning, they had a hydraulic line that they had replaced on the crane that they were using to get snow out of the middle portion of that building. Memorial's done, just about done, and the middle school will be done by tomorrow as well. The whole roof will be cleared off, off the entire building. So as of tomorrow, and for us, when we come back from break, all of the buildings that we will be occupying are structurally sound and safe to be in. We've got the engineering, the engineers lesson for that. As far as the eighth grade wing, that you folks are concerned about, there is some structural damage. In layman's terms, it's a roof truss system, okay? And the trusses are put together with metal plates, okay? And what we discovered, what the engineers discovered when they went up there, is that many of the metal plates going down a particular line all had popped off, okay? So the roof is still standing, but part of that truss has let loose. And so the part that let loose is what we were attaching our suspended ceiling to. So when that started to drop down, the ceilings in the classroom were slowly coming down as well. So nothing has collapsed, everything is still standing. We're just not, we're not allowed in that part of the building. They've gotten the, they're moving all the snow from the roof. We'll be able to get in there next week, administrative, administrators, and we're having a moving company bring everything out of that wing and stage it in the auditorium. Is there still the floor?
The plan is now that they're going to bring all of the material to the modulars, which are still, the other end of the building, and anything that's coming to the high school they're gonna bring there, and if they need an additional trailer, they're gonna, they're gonna bring a trailer with them, if they don't need it, they'll bring it back. But we're gonna bring additional trailer on Tuesday morning. The plan is that by Thursday, we will have the moving of all of the materials that the teachers need, as well as the furniture that we have in the building completed by Thursday.
And they're gonna, you're gonna actually talk about this in a little bit. I'm jumping in. So let's see. So the buildings are safe, we don't have any worries about the buildings that any of our kids are gonna be in. Certainly, I wouldn't put our kids at risk, or my staff at risk, in putting them in an unsafe space. I just wanna say from my part, thank you for your patience this week. It's been a horrendous week for all of us, in terms of trying to sort things out and see, can we open tomorrow or not? Wednesday night after, it was, well, Wednesday during the day, I decided that we weren't gonna be able to open Thursday and Friday, and so I appreciate parents being understanding about that. I know it causes problems for childcare and things like that, but it's what we needed to do to make things happen in order for everybody to stay safe and for this transition to take place. So at this point, any, maybe if we stop here for just a quick second, any questions about what happened? And then we'll move on to where we are now and what's gonna be happening in the next couple of weeks. And I'll introduce Ann Hadlin and Sandy Rutherford to talk about that, the transition. Yes?
Is there a reason why we didn't do like an evacuation, like a fire drill, when you wanted to get the kids out of the eighth grade wing? And the reason I ask how you did, I know it worked out great, everyone evacuated wonderfully, but my son actually went back to it, Walker. But I think if it was like a fire drill, like he'd gone off an alarm, he probably wouldn't have done that, and would've went straight to where, I mean, I shouldn't be calling him up.
Yeah, he'll appreciate that.
You know what I mean? Like, they're used to a certain procedure, how they're going to like leave their classroom for an emergency, and I don't know that that actually took place, it was something unusual for them.
Yeah, at that point, I didn't see it as an emergency situation, that I needed to evacuate like that. If I pulled the alarm, the entire building would be outside of the hole, and I didn't see any reason to do that. If it wasn't a situation where something happened immediately that I had to act on. And so that's why the decision was made not to pull the fire alarm. Oh, okay. So at this point, I'd like to introduce Ann Hadlin. Ann is one of the assistant principals here at the high school. And before Ann talks, just real briefly, what happened was, we knew that we weren't gonna be able to use that eighth grade space. So between the high school admin team and the middle school admin team and folks from the SAU, they came together on Wednesday morning and hammered out immediately, okay, what might this look like? How can we, how can we make this work if we can't put the eighth grade back in that building? And they produced, in a matter of a couple of hours, I think, a remarkable plan to move folks around. We couldn't do much with it before we received school board approval, which we did Wednesday night. The other interesting thing about this is that you all probably knew about this before I had a chance to tell you, because MUR was sitting in the audience. So we took a break during the meeting, and they interviewed me in the hallway, and lo and behold, before I could get to a phone to do my nightly update, you know, MUR's got it splashed all over. So I apologize for that, but when you're working with the media like we have to this week, there was nothing I could do about it. But these folks have produced an incredible plan that I think will meet everybody's needs and keep your kids, our kids, my kids, everybody safe as we go through this process. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ann Hadlin to talk about the floor plan and what we've done here at the high school to make accommodations. So thank you.
Thank goodness it was just one grade and not three. How many of you were at the open house that we did for the eighth grade, just like what a month ago? About, so, I might look familiar, because that was, that was me talking about what we do for a transition. So when we got the news that the eighth grade was coming up, we had to look at our building and figure out what the best spot to kind of keep them somewhat contained. And I'll tell you, that's not really because we're worried so much about our students mixing and mingling with the eighth grade, but we know you have concerns, because even though they're coming to high school in a few months, they're still middle school kids, and we still wanna kind of preserve that community that they have. Our high school kids really have an interest in hanging out with eighth graders. I'll just tell you, tell you right now, they moved out. However, our ninth grade students so love to see their eighth grade teachers. So for example, we had the spelling bee, the spelling bee and the geography bee that was here, like two weeks ago.
I think it's been both.
Oh, okay, so, and Mr. Gray is one of our ninth grade teachers, is filming back there, and he can attest to this, that when the spelling bee and geography bee were here, we noticed that we had just a handful of kids that didn't show up till their next class because they were sneaking into the auditorium to say hi to their teachers. So that's the kind of kids that we have, you know, they're, they're really are, they're good-hearted kids, you know, we love them to death. We're not at all, again, worried about this mixing and mingling, but we wanted to preserve that eighth, that eighth grade community. And many of you know, I used to teach eighth grade, and I know how important this year is for the kids. You know, so last year's been the, you know, the big cheese at the middle school. So anyway, thinking about that, we looked at our floor plan, and we looked at a lot of our different wings, and thought, where's the best place to put them? And right away, I said, this, this has to be where they, they should be. This wing, when you come in, the main entrance, you all walk by, you see the bell that's on your right, and then it's that very first hallway. So the nice thing about this wing is that right above them are the ninth graders, and it's all ninth graders in that hallway. The only way to get into this wing is really from the two fire doors at the beginning of the wing. So we're gonna keep those shut for most of the day, so, you know, students will come, they'll see the sign and realize, well, that's the, that's the middle school wing, I'll put that, you know, not go down there. We have two rooms that we're still using, that you can see on the map, room 100 and room 102. So what's in there? Room 102 is a special ed office for our high school staff, so it's only, it's only adults that are in that room. And then room 100, we do have students that are in there, but they can come in from a back entrance. So there won't, there's no need for any high school kids to be there at all. All of the other wings, the issue with putting students there is that there's always a reason for students, there's something up there that we realize, no, students are gonna have a reason to have to go up and walk into the wing. So again, we figured that, that kind of makes the most sense. As far as like when kids come in in the morning, and when you drop your students off, again, if they come in the main entrance, they're right there, you know, in that wing, their lockers are there, we've got all the lockers, so they all have that space. There's room at the end of the hallway, this glass at the end, we can go down and see it. Room 111, that's the office where Mr. Shore is going to be, that's where the middle school admin team is going to be. In the faculty room, which is right above room 100, you see it in yellow, there's a blue box right there, is a little tiny office that Mr. Yulfelder is going to be using for guidance. So really, we kind of, you know, thought that everybody in there with some sharing of classrooms, there's, there's really room for the entire program, if I'm not mistaken. But anyway, it just, it was really nice, because again, it keeps the kids somewhat isolated. They also had use of our mini gym, which gave completely to the middle school, so thank you. My finger, this is fun. So when, we're looking, we took a little tour of the building, and the remarks by some of the middle school teachers, and I saw the mini gym, wow, this is nicer than the gym that we have at the middle school, so you might stick around. The, there are a couple other places that the kids will go, the chorus room, right over here, right by the band room. When we took a tour with the staff, and what they said is that probably what will end up happening, oh, by the way, I should mention this, that the high school schedule and the middle school schedule don't jive as far as passing time. So when eighth grade students are passing, for the few times that they have to be out kind of in the main area of the building, all of our other students should be in class, should be in class. Ultimately, fully. So I know a lot of kids will be seeing this, they'll be here in the chorus room, so they'll just come out the doors, they'll walk this way, around to the chorus room. The only actual classroom that they're going to pass is this one right here, which is our French, our French teachers in this room, they're, you know, upper level high school kids that take French. So they're not scary. They may stop and say some words in French to the kids. For course. And then of course, when they're in the cafeteria, I know Mr. Rutherford's gonna talk about this, this schedule, but again, short walk to the cafeteria over here, and they're having lunch after our entire high school, lunch crew has, you know, done, complete, so they're by themselves. Bathrooms are right here, so then it's just a short walk. So we kind of just thought, you know, this is a great place for the kids to be, because they really don't have to go very far for anything. And if they do have to take a walk anywhere, they're probably going with their teachers, if they take a trip to the library over here, you know, even the homeschoolers taking them to the mini gym. You know, so we definitely think that this is the best place for them. Now, if you have high school students, you know, wondering, well, hmm, what happened to all the classes here that were displaced? The nice thing about the teachers in this wing, we have three, three world language teachers that had to be displaced. They teach for the Little Park upperclassmen, and one of whom we said was right here, the French teacher. But Mr. McQueen, two of your kids are making Spanish, they might have Mr. McQueen. His room is actually going to be right upstairs. So the kids, this is a stairway right here, so when they have, if they have Mr. McQueen, they'll go up the stairs, and then literally to the room that's right there, so they walk across from the stairway, and they're right there to see Mr. McQueen. So that's really, that's about as far as they're gonna have, you know. But so those world language teachers have, for the most part, upperclassmen, so a move for them is not a big deal, they're used to it, they kind of go with the flow. And we also had some humanities teachers that teach juniors and seniors. So they tend to have kind of single, we call them singleton classes, where they're not necessarily working on a team, where they don't have to be right next door to another teacher, where they have to plan. For example, we didn't wanna move our freshman learning community, if you came and heard by spiel, you don't wanna, again, keep our math community together. We didn't wanna move our math wing, because we have math teachers that work very closely together. Obviously, we couldn't move science, they need science labs. So again, this was the best place, you know, to look at for, for your kids. And I have to tell you that the day that our high school teachers moved, it was like the most amazing thing I'd ever seen, I mean, honestly, we took pictures of it. We had our entire high school staff got together with the teachers in those rooms, and, I mean, literally, moving furniture and boxes, and in about two hours, those rooms were stripped clean. And I remember one teacher, the Spanish teacher who's been here for nine years, who has this awesome room, like lots of decorations and tons of, you know, students work, and, you know, I thought, this is gonna take forever, but literally, like eight people boxed her up, picked up, you know, her chairs, desks, everything, moved her out. And when you see it down there, it looks like it's just a, you know, brand new wing, like no one's been there, it's nice and clean, ready for the kids to move in. So it was just, it was great to see our high school staff come together, and, you know, they did that because they want your kids to feel welcome, but also the middle school teachers to come and feel welcome. So, you know, we're all in this together, you know, we'll make it work.
Before I start talking about schedule, nobody slept very well in the last week or so. Things keep coming to mind, and you keep waking up and writing things down. And as Ann was speaking, there are a couple of things that jumped in mind immediately. One is we've designed a schedule so that there is no passing time with high school students within the building. So that they, when they're going around the corner to Mrs. Cook, there should not be other students in the hallways at that time. And the other is that when Mr. McQueen, who we love dearly, is a great Spanish teacher, when his, is his class staff, he will come down and get the students and bring them up, at least for the first week, so that we know that things are going smoothly. In terms of the schedule itself, the first thing you may notice is that students are gonna be arriving at least 10 minutes earlier. And we hope, and we hope, and we really hope that, I know that from the people that are here, the students will get here in a timely way. But we do have a number of eighth grade students who really need to be on time and struggle with being on time at 7:25. So this may be an issue, but they are gonna get out a little bit earlier. We did not put the times in for them, they are the same teachers. And before I go any further, we have six eighth grade teachers here tonight, and it's remarkable that they're here, they've done a fantastic job. Mr. Gannon, Mr. Butler, Mr. Morissette, Mr. McCready, Ms. Colley, and Ms. Delap. Thank you very much. It is, it will be the same teachers that the eighth grade students have had back at the middle school building, but there are some changes in the schedule. And the reason for the changes in the schedule, you'll see PDB, which are the Unified Arts teachers, the first two blocks. The reason for that is they'll have to travel from the middle school up here, and they have to have enough time to get back. So we had to schedule it in a way that would allow for that time. It is a tremendous inconvenience for those folks that have to be traveling, but they're willing to do it, and they're gonna do a remarkable job. But it is the same teachers, the same offerings in terms of classes, and we will have the times for the academic blocks for 55 or 60 minutes. And basically, that is our schedule, as I said. It does, it coincides in terms of passing time, with no passing times at high school, so, and I don't anticipate any problems. We just wanna make sure that we alleviate it as much as we could. Okay, when we come back on Monday, with our belief that we really ought to bring the eighth grade students back to the building before bringing them here for a number of reasons. One is that during next week, beginning on Tuesday, we'll be emptying their lockers. There'll be lunches for three weeks. We know, we know, it's pretty scary, you know, with lockers. And you'll see close that you've completely forgotten the children. But what we're gonna do is, from between Tuesday and Thursday, we're gonna bag them, locker number, student name, and we're gonna have them in big bags, big baskets, they're gonna bring to the high school, and they'll be in the hallway when the students get here, so that they can get their locker stuff out. They are completely taking any high school students out of the lockers, and the lovely thing is, there's probably, probably 150 or 200 more lockers than we need, so we'll be able to space students out, more than we put at the middle school. So that will take place.
Now, they know they have to bring out those bags, but they're, they're not gonna take the bag and just bring it and put it in the locker.
We could not have, we did not expect, nor could we have received a better welcome than we did from this entire staff. We're very, very, we are. The other thing that we have at the school, some parents are here who have already called, and we've been able to get some instruments, but the eighth grade, the musical instruments. And we are going to have them, when they come in on that Monday, we're gonna have them go to the band room and get their instruments to take up to the high school, and they'll be able to take them on the bus with them. We're gonna have a conversation with them about what our expectations are, because those expectations for behavior are not changing when they're at the high school. We're gonna have a conversation with them about the expectations that they are not gonna wander around the high school. And I will tell you, as parents, I have never been with a nicer eighth grade group than this year. So I don't have any, I have absolutely no concerns about them coming up here and it being a behavioral issue. This is a phenomenal class of students, and they will be welcomed here, and I think they'll appreciate what's here. But I need to know that we wanna get back together at the middle schools in Eastwood Campus. Our hope is that we'll be able to be back in the middle school, perhaps, if we're lucky, by the end of our April vacation. That's our hope. It's nice that we're up here, but it is an inconvenience, it's an inconvenience for the high school, they've done it, and there've been no complaints, but neither of our, neither of our buildings can really do what we do when we're center. We'll do the best that we can, and I think we'll do a remarkable job, and I think the kids will have a good time while they're here, and I think academically, they'll be pushed as they are pushed into school, and I think that they'll be able to thrive here. But we really wanna be back in the middle school. But we will leave the middle school as close to nine as we can. Ann has a whole agenda for an assembly when they get here, so we can talk about safety issues, how they operate with fire drills. Ann, do you want to say anything about that?
No, I mean, really, it's just the areas that we have, and staff that we have that we're sharing, the kids really should know who our school nurses and our librarians are sharing those areas. The procedures that we have for lockdowns and fire drills are relatively the same, it's just, you know, where the kids are going, when they evacuate the building, you know, just a few kinds of small things. And that's for the teachers to hear, as well as the students, so we're kind of on the same page. I did say, and I can say this here, too, it's not a secret, that probably within the first couple of weeks that your students are up here, we're gonna do a drill of some kind, because that's the best way to, you know, find out, does everybody understand the procedure, and is there anything that we missed with the kids? So just don't be alarmed if in the first couple of weeks, you find out that we're having a secure campus drill. Though that's what sometimes we call the lockdown. With all the snow outside, we're gonna avoid doing an evacuation. I think we'll, you know, we'll wait, that would be unkind, but anyway, that's about it.
All right. And the next slide, Ellen, let's talk a little bit.
In terms of the buses, so the first day back from vacation, students will take their normal bus. However they've been getting to school over at the middle school up until this week, they will do the same thing that morning. We've been working with the bus company to change the bus routes and get all of that squared away, and so there'll be additional information forthcoming on the new, if they had to move any bus routes around and move bus stops, that'll be coming through the bus company, through us from the bus company.
Dr. Blake doesn't know, but it's already on the website. We will be there, the buses this afternoon, we will be there to make sure students get on the right bus on Monday afternoon and the following morning. The bus, the list, on the roofs lists the time when it goes by particular places, but it will be probably about 10 minutes earlier than it was before. Passing periods, we talked about that. There is a water fountain on the eighth grade side, so there's no need for them to have to wander all the way down to the gym to get water. They will be, we will talk with them about the locations within the building, and they'll have a tour of the building after we're done with the meeting we just had, when in group. Mrs. Ficker, who is also here, I did not mention, Mrs. Ficker is one of our clerical folks, she's my assistant at the, at the middle school. Mrs. Ficker will be here, and Mr. Shore will probably spend three days a week here, will probably spend two, but we're gonna figure that out after the first week in terms of how we divide up the administrative folks. And Mrs. Ficker will be here, working with either Mr. Shore or myself. Mr. Yulfelder will be here. The phone system has already been put in place, so that when you call the high school, you'll be able to get to the middle school, routed to the middle school. Mrs. Ficker or one of us will be there as a person who receives the calls that they commit, and phone calls can go to different classes. But in here somewhere, we said that voicemail is available, that an email is preferable for us. for us. Emails are the same as they were at the middle school, that has not changed. The sick calls and dismissals will take place through the main office, but you'll call in if someone is sick, we'll do the attendance through the other, through the middle school. Six-seven still will be the same as it was, it's a clinical system, it all works the same, so that should not be an issue. But if you're calling in, uh, you would call in to, um, the, the high school here and get to the middle school and just let them know that someone will be out, and you'll have to dismiss students through the main office, as you would if you were the middle school. It's a little longer walk though than the parking lot at our office. Health records have already been moved, the lockers we talked about, um, instruments are going to travel on Monday, um, dismissal we talked about. Lunch accounts are going to be transferred, or already have been transferred to the high school, so that should not be an issue. Lunch, it just happened that the high school ends their lunch period at twelve o'clock, and it just happens that our eighth-grade lunch is at twelve ten. So it works perfect, nothing has to be changed. The doors can be closed at all times, bus routes are posted. We really have not completely figured out clubs. We know sports, that we'll have shuttles, we'll be able to take kids to Chase Field from here, as well as from the middle school for our spring sports. We know the spring sports, that it is probably the largest number of students we have that participate, we usually have over a hundred students in track, and then we have at least two baseball teams. So, we will get that through. The club business at this point is still something we haven't sorted out. But we will get it sorted out, and if it's possible for us, and I know that we've talked to the high school already about some clubs that they have going here, some science clubs that perhaps our students would be able to participate in, but that's one thing that we really have not finding out. Late buses, there is a late bus that, uh, leaves here every day at four o'clock. It is a very similar route to the routes that we had before. Uh, you can check the late bus route, uh, which should be on the, on the high school website, uh, but that is about, it's not everything we've done, but it's a lot of what we've been working on.
Oh, and this is, uh, this is Dak asking just to show you all how you can sign up for his principal email list. And I bet a lot of you probably have already done that. But if you haven't, when you go to our high school web, webpage, you can see where the arrow is pointing, it's right there, you just click on that, and it's just a little Google Doc that you can fill out, and there's actually space for you to check that you're an eighth-grade parent. So you'll get our high school communication, but if there are times where we want to send something out just for eighth-grade parents, you can sort emails based on grade. So, again, since your students will be up here in our facility, if you haven't done that, um, that would be a great thing for you to do. And I, I thought of something while Mr. Rutherford was talking. I did hear that a lot of parents, uh, at the middle school drop off and pick up their students, and so our buses actually come over here to the side of the building, so the parent pickup is in the front, it's in that loop where you came in. You should just know that, um, it will be crowded, so we did talk about having a police detail here for a, a little bit, just to kind of sort out the traffic, because, you know, we've got parents trying to pick up kids, we've got a couple buses that are out there, and we have a ton of high school kids that are driving too, so we've got to watch out for the high school kids. So, anyway, so we'll, we'll get that sorted out, but just, you know, patience, um, because it will be probably a little congested for a bit.
Okay, well, there you have it. An interesting week, and thank goodness I have such an incredible team to work with, uh, that was able to pull all this together in relatively short amount of time. We're, we're very fortunate, um, in the situation, and I think we're making the best of, of what is not a comfortable situation for anybody. So at this point, um, we'll try to field questions. I'd like to think that we've thought of everything, but realistically, there's probably something along the line that, that we've, uh, not thought of, and we're going to have to catch up with it.
I have a question about bathrooms. Are they going to use their bathrooms with the other classroom as well, or?
Yes, can we go back to the, the math?
You know, when you come out, you don't come out of the library today, if you look, um, directly to your left, you'll see a little office that has glass in front of it, and from that office you can see straight down the hallway, that's where our school resource office is. Um, at least it's located there for us. So, yeah, so we've time to take cross paths and look back.
And also, there's, um, there's, there's cameras that are ceiling-mounted cameras in the hallway, so that we can see coming and going of folks in the bathrooms as well, both levels. Actually came in very handy, but we had, we had the issue here last year with the fire. Oh, yes. They're not in the bathrooms, of course. No, okay.
So, uh, things like eighth-grade band, how is, how will that work?
The, uh, historically, we've had a seventh and eighth-grade band. Uh, and I know, having spoken with Dak Brad and Nicole Bartlett and, um, Amy Edge today, they really had a desire to see if there wasn't some way to put it together. Initially, they thought that what they were going to do is to combine the eighth-grade and the ninth-grade band, but that didn't work in terms of their schedule. They are going to figure a way to still maintain a seventh and eighth-grade band, but they are not going to be able to practice together here. But they have thought it through, and it's done something, it's not something we took lightly, because it's been very, very important to us.
I think kids will have band every day.
Yes.
So, yeah, in the back. Do you figure out how many days one can wake up in this year?
No, next question. And, and that's actually the honest answer. I, I haven't, you know, I just want to get through the next week or two, because we, we still don't know, um, we're at, I think, ten snow days so far this year, you know, including the days this week. The fortunate thing is that the Samuel Regional School District goes by seat time and not necessarily days. And so when we, when we look at the number of hours that we have to have to meet the minimum, uh, minimum standards, we're, we're above that already on a regular basis. Yes, kids, they're going to school more than we have. So, so we're, we're okay there. Every year, we typically end up in a situation where we make up some of the days, and then we utilize some of the days for professional development for the staff. I anticipate that happening this year as well. I don't know how many days yet. Given our situation, and I've been on the phone every day with the Commissioner of Education, she's well aware of, of what we're dealing with, um, and has basically said, "Don't worry about the days, we'll get it figured out." So, I don't think we're going to get the whole week forgiven, but I, I think that they're, they'll be willing to work with us in, in terms of forgiving some of the days. So, long answer to a short question, and hopefully, we don't have any more snow or, or dare I say, flood issues when all of this decides to happen. Here, and then there, and then there.
My daughter's worried about the Latin play that they just signed up for.
Carol Mize and I was, we worked this week, right here in the office, we're in the, in the library where you work, and the plan is that students will be able to be shuttled from the middle school here, and that the, uh, Carol did not, she was going to send something out today about the, um, about the tryouts for the play, and that's still going to take place, it'll take place, she's going to take care of that on Tuesday when we get back. But it's still on, it's still on. We have a shuttle planned for when we get students up here, so that it can all be still done.
Yeah, we're hoping to not disrupt any of our, of our students.
I, I just want to know about the extent of damage that the school sustained, and what is the timetable? Is, are we going back there, or is this the, the rest of the?
Fair, fair question. Um, I don't know, next question. No, the extent, we, actually, to be honest with you, I wasn't over there, um, in the last two days to see what the, Carol Capola, our business administrator, has dealt with the insurance company and the structural engineers. So I haven't, I haven't been there. There is significant damage to at least two classrooms worth of roofing, the, uh, trusses, thank you. And so, we're in a, we're in a situation, we're sort of in a holding pattern now, because they want to have some other folks come in and look at it, some other engineers, and decide, A, was there something, was it the snow load that caused that? Or was there something structurally not okay with, with the trusses themselves? For example, were the plates big enough that were used? I don't know. So, there's a lot of questions that still have to be answered by the experts, and then you got the insurance company involved, so they have to have their people look at it. So, look, look.
Well, one of, one of the reasons for moving everything out of the eighth-grade side is because the plan from the contractor's standpoint, working with Mr. Capola, is that they will remove the ceiling all the way down on the eighth-grade side in order to get to it, so they can do it in a more of a timely way, rather than trying to crawl up inside and do it. That's the reason for moving everything out as quickly as we're moving it out.
So, so they're going to be taking down the suspended ceiling, so they can see visually everything that's there. And just, the other piece to it, that, is that it's not just the suspended ceiling and then the, you know, insulation and roof. There is, there's, because it's a school, there's a fire retardant, uh...
Parry?
Yeah, spray. No, it's not, it's not the spray, it's, uh, the plasterboard, fireboard, that's up there, suspended as well. And so, they've got to get through all of that to see what the dam, you know, the extent of the damages down that side. Now, it's only on, when you visualize, if you're in the eighth-grade hallway, looking down the hallway toward the music rooms and the modulators, it's only the outside that has any of the damage that we've seen. The snow, what they're talking about is that the snow came, blew off of the flat roof, the rest of the building is the way, the other wing, blew off of that, up over the one side of the building and settled on the outside of that building. So it's only the outside classrooms. The other side of the roof had pretty much no snow on it at all, no blowing off. So it's just that outside hallway? I don't know if they're taking the whole roof off and replacing it, or if they're just going to do, you know, if they're going to re-engineer and, and fix what's, what's there, I don't know that that's been decided.
Are they going to, on this question, are they going to check everything all the way down on that side?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Just to make sure that we're not going to miss something, you know, with the standard we've done. How old is that?
Nineteen ninety-two, I believe.
Nineteen ninety-two. Another interesting tidbit, that's the newer addition to the building, the older part of the building is all metal construction. We've got no issue with, with any of, any of that part of the building. The building that we're able to occupy is all, is all metal construction. This section, that eighth-grade wing, is, is the wooden choice.
I know a lot of the kids want to know, what about winter carnival?
One of, one of the issues that we have, and Mrs. Ficker and I put an awful lot of time into planning winter carnival, including dividing the teams, getting them together, getting everyone to be on board with what we're going to do. And one of the problems that we have with a structure that we're going back to six-seven is we have far less space than we've ever had. And there would be no way for us to pull off winter carnival in the facility, the six-seventh grade facility that we possibly have. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to say for this year that it's not possible to pull it off. If it were possible to pull it off, we've got it all organized, we would. We don't have the space on the six-seventh grade side to pull off winter carnival the way it's designed.
Is there a way to revamp something for these kids at the high school level to?
There's a way for us, there's a way.
Sammy, hi, how are you?
It's, it's been discussed, and I know that it's on the minds of all the eighth-grade teachers, and all the teachers here are very sensitive to wanting eighth-grade to feel welcome, so I'm not an ability to divulge any secrets at all. But I believe there's been some discussions about how to, you know, something, rebuild that for both six and seven, and I think one of the things that I heard the eighth-grade teachers saying they're here, is that they feel that they want some time to create a scenario where they can be six, seven, and eight together. So I think they're talking about maybe a, a little bit down the road, what would that look like, because that's what they really want to preserve. Did I capture that right?
Yeah, we've had some, some discussions, but we really have to grab our minds of, you know, getting some supplies up here, establishing an environment, but certainly we do look forward to, to doing something.
I don't suppose this solves our rooms without heat at all, does it? When we fix the roof, do we solve the rooms that don't have heat in that, in that area?
The rooms without heat, there were four rooms without heat. Three of them were in the modulators, which we can no longer occupy, and still don't have heat, because some people were there testing us. And the one room that didn't have heat on the six-seventh grade side had to do with a valve that was broken, it was replaced. So the leak the six-seventh grade side is fine now.
So that was, that was fixed, then?
Question, for the carnival thing, none of the kids just put a lot of work into, and I'm not sure if you know that, I know my daughter and her friends put a lot of work into the collar, couldn't they still do like a particular day? I don't know, like a particular day today, if we blew a white or a whole lot of the kids...
If you can see here now, it certainly will.
Is there something this week?
We've had, we've had to spend so much time on the stuff that we have before. We'll figure out, there's not, it's not only winter carnival, there was a talent show that we really want to be able to see if we can't figure out a way to put it together. And we, I promise you, we will look into it.
This is a question, it's more of a comment, but I've worked in a district, I was a middle school teacher in a district, I got displaced because of the flack mold. So I, I understand, and I know my daughter's upset, and they got all their tutus and all the face paint, like, so I hear all that, and I'm thinking about, can I return this stuff? But I just also want to say, having been a teacher that lived through a transition, and we had, it was, uh, eight hundred people in the school, to four different schools. I was teaching this school with no cafeteria and a principal's office with forty-five kids. So I hear this, and I think it's, I think it's hard for eighth graders, this was the year to be at the top, and, and they're going to miss some of that, but at the same time, first of all, it's not nearly as painful for anybody as it is for the teachers, so thank you, and even worse for your uni, your, I would call them Unified Arts, because they're going to drive regardless of the weather and find parking and everything else. So, it is a big transition. I can also tell you, though, the students, as I still talk to them, we always talk about that year, we're all going to remember the winter that it never stopped snowing, the winter they got this place, and it is challenging, but in the scheme of things, you've got to have no idea how lucky you are to have a whole wing that you have access to, because in Lawrence, when it happened, we were stuck, people were teaching in gyms, people were, it was just, it was a real disaster. So, I, I hear everything, and I'm living it with two middle schoolers, but at the same time, you're also very lucky.
One of the, one of the things I think, some of the, some folks this afternoon, you know, all school districts throughout the state have emergency response plans that we put into place, and, you know, we have an event that might happen, and the event takes, you know, is a day or a few hours, and it's over, and we move on, and we put the plan away till the next time. This event has been a solid week, and so, you know, when I say that I'm thankful to have such a great leadership team, I can't tell you how many countless hours I've spent just keeping the media informed, because they call relentlessly, like, three or four times a day wanting updates on what we're doing, and updates on the damage, and updates on how we're transitioning kids, and it's, I mean, it's Boston stations and local stations and half a dozen newspapers, and so that's as, my, one of my primary roles during events like this is to deal with, with the media. And, and it's crazy, just, just dealing with all of that, and keeping informed about, from everybody else, what, what is actually happening.
Just, I just wanted to commend both the, the, the school district administration, the administration and teachers of both schools, the middle school, high school, and Mrs. And this is a really obviously difficult situation, you guys really pulled together a really well thought out plan very quickly and I think we all as parents appreciate that. I know there's a million little details and inconveniences that have to be dealt with, but I think overall you guys have done a really nice job here, so I appreciate and thank you for that. The, a question about as much as we would like, as much as it'd be nice if the snow was over, it's probably not. Is there some kind of plan or we're modifying what we do for facilities maintenance going for, for the rest of the winter for the middle school and the other high school buildings in order to?
At this, at this point in time, all of the buildings are virtually cleared of snow. Now, we're supposed to get more snow on Sunday. I might call you just because. But, you know, one snowstorm, we don't have to worry about it. If we, if we see a series of storms that are starting to pile up again, then certainly we're going to have to get back up there and get things cleared away. And the way the roofs are designed, they're designed to be able to handle a fairly substantial snow load. This has just, this has been unprecedented. I think what put us over the edge was those high winds that we had last Sunday. It just, you know, really caused a lot of the drifting on the roofs, which caused a lot of our headaches.
I just want folks to know from the middle school that I don't know what you heard about the damage, the, from other folks. We had no, none of the ceilings fell in. There was nothing that fell on any students and there still is nothing that is falling in the building. So they were damaged, but it was not to the degree that some folks might have thought. There was nothing that fell in.
Okay, so.
Just some of the kids are here, just some of our high school students and they're adorable, they're not scary. But when, when all this kind of came about, it was, it was very, warmed my heart that so many of our kids were reaching out to Mr. Stack and the other advisors to say, "What can we do for the eighth grade?" And we had our sunshine, a group of teachers tried to take care of our eighth grade students and deliver some chocolate, but the kids have been great then. So for all of the eighth grade students that are here, just so you know, there are a number of classes that have some special things planned for you to welcome you in the first couple of weeks that you're, that you're up here, because we really are excited again. You know, we're kind of one big family. So Anna Dolan, who is our student council president, you know, Mr. Stack said, "Hey, can you be there tonight if kids or parents have any questions?" And of course, here she is, because that's the kind of kids that, that we have here. So if, when we're doing tours, if you have any questions for the kids, if students have questions for the kids, they'd be happy to answer them, right?
So at this point, there are no other questions. This is going to get real interesting for these people to comb down the hole a little bit, but we're going to do just that. Give you an opportunity to visually see what's on this map. Thank you, folks!